So let's get started. We'll start with introductions. And it looks like Scott, you're up first.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Dawn?
Don Dehand, District One.
And I believe that's Raul on the phone. Is that you, Raul?
Jim, I don't see our new Commissioner. Maybe he on the phone?
I don't know. Someone's on the phone in the 448. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Star six to unmute on the phone.
Thanks, Molly. Okay, well, we'll come back. Donna, would you introduce yourself, please?
You're muted, Donna.
Let me see if I can get that on this end.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, the phone is unmuted now.
Can you hear me now?
We'll be right back to you. Okay, would you introduce yourself? Looks like you're unmuted now.
No.
This is Kevin from District One.
Oh, you want?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Donna Nickerson, District Three.
Thank you. Okay, so y'all, if you haven't noticed, we have a new here, Kevin. And would you like to give us your three minutes of fame, Kevin?
Sure. Sorry you couldn't hear me earlier. I hit star six five times, but something strange going on.
No worries.
My name's Kevin Pestinger. I live in Lacey. Grew up here in the state of Washington, moved away to California after college and did most of a career in the software industry down in California, but moved back here. All my family still lives here in Thurston County area and moved back here to be closer to them in the last about six, seven years ago. So I've been back here in Thurston County the last seven years. I am the CEO of a software company here in Olympia, about 20 people, employees. We make software for labor unions. In my spare time, I'm also the community representative on the transportation policy board for the TRPC and do a lot of volunteer work for a bunch of nonprofits in the area.
Very nice. Thank you.
Good to have you aboard. Look forward to your input.
Thank you.
So next, we are looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
And second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by aye.
Jim, I have something to add. Kind of a little bit of a question on the website. I want to ask staff about website, discuss it a little bit.
Okay, let's get to that in the updates. Will that work for you?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
So almost in favor of the approval of the agenda, excuse me, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public communications. For this virtual meeting, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the planning commission. Dialing in, press nine to raise your hand. The chair post will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. Three minute timer will show on the video screen to help keep you track. It'll start in the green, go to the yellow, which signifies you have about 30 seconds left. And then when it goes to red, we're asking you to kind of wrap up your thoughts at that point. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785 to make your public comment. So let's see if we got anybody out there. So looks like John Woodford, you're up at the top.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two things that I want to talk about this evening. The first relates to the June 2 meeting, your last meeting. And I was really taken aback when this Davis said that only the Board of County Commissioners can create or authorize stakeholders group because they had to approve the expenses, the staff expenses. This is something, being a listener, in following almost every planning commission meeting for the last four years, it's the first time I've ever heard this. And I want to know, how did Maya Templey get stakeholder groups when she was doing the mineral lands portion of the comp land updates recently? She had stakeholder groups and I didn't ever hear anything about BOCC funding of those groups. The SMP have three functioning stakeholder groups prior to the stop on May 15th of 2018, the pause, which and the stakeholder groups never resumed. At that time, I asked Josh Cummings in a private meeting I had with him about the reopening of stakeholder commissions and he's stakeholder meetings and he said it was entirely up to Brad Murphy. Nothing has ever been said about county commissioners authorization for stakeholders meetings. And Patrick Townsend, others, myself have been asking for the last two and a half years of why the SMB stakeholder coalitions never resumed. It's too late now, according to Andy Defoe's memorandum, we're wrapping things up now. But what happened? Why did the SMP get so short circuited on stakeholder coalition, stakeholder groups? And I hope that one of you Commissioners will ask staff that question. The next thing I wanted to bring up is the notification of the SED redesignations, some 2,700 people involved. Again, given the timeline of Andy's memorandum, I don't know where else we can go at this point. But at the November 18th, 2020 meeting, Andy presented the draft postcard, which looked more like just an invitation to the virtual open house that went out to everybody. There was no mention of redesignation of any properties. The only thing it said was learn about changes that are going to affect your shoreline property. And that's, that's all that was said. It was, it was the, you Commissioners disagreed with the content of that postcard and it's to be re-present, represented to you. And I hope you will insist that it be represented to you because it's going to be sent out to these people very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have John Newman.
How are you doing?
Looks like you got muted there, John. That might have been me.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, there's been some discussion of shoreline hardening in the county. You know, a lot of people will say it's hard, it's bad for the environment, but I think, and well, actually it is bad for the environment, but what residents don't realize is that a breathing shoreline helps clean the water in, in smaller water bodies, keeps the slime from developing out there, the algae from developing out there. So it's, it's a benefit to not harden shorelines. It's, it's a benefit to not allow bulkheads or concrete. It's better for the residents, the property owners, and of course, the environment not to harden shorelines. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I apologize, but when you come on, could you please introduce yourself and let us know what area of the county that you're living in? That was my error, sorry. Again, mute your, unmute yourself, Lisa.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. This is Elise Reiner on the west side of Olympia, Washington. I also wanted to speak about the June 2 meeting. I also attended the Thurston County Commissioner meeting last week when there was discussion about the planning commission, Thurston County Planning Commission. Of course, the planning commission is an advisory board of citizens. But before you was given a, some discussion regarding two buildings that the Thurston County were, was going to deal with. One was the Mottman Road facility for Mary Hall. She uses it to count ballots. The other one was the atrium on Pacific Avenue. As I understand it, the planning commission, for whatever reason, did not weigh in to these issues heavily. I believe that both buildings are very important for the continuance of our elections, of our democracy. Mary Hall needs these buildings in order to count ballots in Mottman Road. She already put in a huge generator for the Mottman Road facility because of course, Thurston County has been renting that building for a long time. And now we have the opportunity to buy that building. The Thurston County Commissioners already gave a $50,000 earnest money to buy the Mottman Road building for Mary Hall so that she can continue counting her ballots there. And so it's so important that the planning commission weigh in on these important issues. As you know, there's not enough room in the current Thurston County courthouse on the hill to, for all the staff, especially during this COVID period, we've seen a lot of problems with social distancing. And I think the planning commission has to weigh in on these very important issues. And I guess the Thurston County Commissioners were wondering why there wasn't more, more discussion by the planning commission on these very, very important issues. So I urge the planning commission to support buying the Mottman Road facility. We've already put 50,000 down on the building. And of course, the atrium on Pacific Avenue, we have to be able to have our staff in one place while the old Thurston County courthouse building is being renovated. And for the courts, the courts are very important part of our democracy, too. So please think about those issues and go forward. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right?
You're good.
Okay. Christie White, I live in the Delphi Valley. I just wanted to echo John Woodford's comments earlier about stakeholders and advisory groups that kind of startled me to exactly where that lies and what the rules are and, and who can create them. As you know, I've spoken before, I think it is so important and so valuable to have citizens involved in panels to help craft something for the county code particularly that is a win-win for everybody. So I totally support the, the concept and drive to have those advisory committees. Secondly, I do have some concern, even though I do not live on shoreline, that the notification to people in, in the county about what's going to happen to their property is very specific and not, not lost and that it is something that catches their attention. Again, as I've mentioned before, it's, it's about communication and, and I think that's very, very important. So I just wanted to echo John's comments on that this evening. And welcome new Commissioner Kevin. You'll probably see my name here and there at these meetings. So thanks, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. John Pettit.
Yes, Commissioner, my name's John Pettit. I live on Rich Road. I presume you can hear me?
You're, you're good.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I watched the, the June 2 meeting and, and of course, I, I am a person that believes in policies and, and everything. And I, I was kind of wondering if somehow you could request some type of actual policies be made available to the public as to how items are brought before you and timing and sequence and how they're represented, for instance, to the Board of County Commissioners, the responsibilities. One of the things which I personally have been observing and everything was, of course, this recent, what they refer to as a minor amendment and which involved the buildings that a previous person was talking about. And so I, being a person of policies, I take a look and, and you know, to my shock was, you guys are supposed to be considering the relative nature of a minor amendment according to the comp plan, but in order to consider that, an amendment has to be docketed and none of that issue was even docketed. So I'm wondering, how is it possible that you as a planning commission are posed with a position to be making recommendations about a potential amendment to the comp plan if it's never gone through the docketing process? And I'd like to know who directed the process for maybe planning to bring this, the planning department or person to bring this to you. It's very disturbing to think that the public doesn't really need to know and it appears that the position of how things were set up, it was like you're supposed to be some type of rubber stamp for the, for the county staff up there to approve whatever they happen to send your way. So I would like to know where the actual policies for the employees and how they bring things to you would be. And I believe Jennifer is the person that might be the name of the person from the county that's works with you. And perhaps that question could be avail, made, answers to be made available. I was also concerned about a, in the process, you guys aren't given very much real information like a determination of non-significance for these two sites, which was run through the Thurston County Planning Department, signed by Jennifer, was filled in for the environmental parts. And it was approved by Jennifer, but neither one of the sites actually are within the jurisdiction of Thurston County. They're actually within the city. So I'd like to have a very clear policy element put out before us so we understand we are thankful for your hard work and dedication as citizens. It's, it's not for the pay that you're doing it. It's because we know that you care about us. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. So is there anybody else out there that would like to address the panel here? I'm not seeing any other hands, so please raise your hand if you would like to speak Okay, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. So we're going to move on to the planning commission recommendation process. Jennifer?
Thanks, Jim, and welcome. Kevin, I can't see you, but hopefully you can see me. Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager. So the Chair of the Planning Commission asked for this agenda item. I think it's kind of good timing since we have a new planning commissioner here tonight so we could kind of bring Kevin up to speed on sort of our process, at least the process we've been following for the last, I don't know, many number of years. So I can give context around that and talk about our procedures for how the planning commission provides their recommendations to the board. And then the planning commission can have the discussion that it wants to have about that. For context and the bigger picture, all of the items that come for planning commission review, that's dictated by the Thurston County Code and that whole process. It's basically all of the things under the Growth Management Act that involve comprehensive plan amendments and development regulations. And the docket for what the planning commission actually looks at is set and prioritized by the Board of County Commissioners every spring. And we also discuss with the Board of County Commissioners every spring when they create the dockets of work for the planning commission, the general scope of each project and timing of each project. So any changes to scope, timing, things that will create a longer length of time than the board has anticipated and expects. We go back to the board frequently and check in on projects. That's what we're going to do on the citizens work group idea about the wireless facility since that would add some time and effort and likely cost to that project. So it's just a process of keeping the board informed about where their priorities are through the legislative process. So because the planning commission is subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, and I know Kevin's going to do that training and you all have done that training, all deliberations and discussions and motions and votes and anything findings that you all have around making a recommendation to the planning commission all need to happen during these open public meetings. I found a handy write-up of the issues around having electronic and email communication. I include that in your packet from Municipal Research Services Center. Super handy as a reference. There's nuances in there, so I just defer to that as your guidance to keep us all on the up and up with the OPMA as far as email communications among members are concerned. So CPED's role, staff's roles to facilitate the transmittal of your recommendations to the board in a manner timely to when the board is discussing the item. So the current procedure is basically you'll, you do your deliberations during a regular meeting, you vote on a motion with a recommendation for the board. That's recorded in the minutes, the majority vote, any findings made by the planning commission during that discussion, we take notes on. And then staff drafts up a recommendation letter that reflects the motion, the vote, and the recommendations and the findings to the best of our ability. We email that draft letter to the Chair for Review, Editing and Approval. That's a big role of the Chair. The Chair is the one who signs official actions by the planning commission and certifies them. The Chair can change it, rewrite it, do whatever the Chair wants to, sends it back to staff with signature and approval. And then the staff takes that letter and forwards it to the Board of County Commissioners, usually as an attachment to the next briefing they're going to hold on the topic. If there's a minority finding or opinion by two or more planning commissioners, they can draft their own separate minority report and they can provide that to staff who will then attach that also for what is going forward to the board. On the very infrequent occasion where staff is recommending an action that differs from the planning commission recommendation, the rules of procedure say that staff notifies the planning commission and provides the opportunity for the Chair or the Chairs designate to represent the planning commission when the report, your recommendation is presented to the board. We don't do that very often, but we did do that last year. If you recall, with the comprehensive plan update around the agriculture and forestland designation, staff had a slightly different recommendation than the planning commission. So Scott Nelson was invited to and attended that briefing with the board to represent the thinking of the planning commission directly at that meeting. So that's basically the whole process in a nutshell. And yeah, it's your agenda items. So I just want to turn it over to you for how you want to discuss it, any questions you might have.
So this came up and I've been advocating for it for a while for all, all of the members on the planning commission to see that letter of recommendation or disapproval or whatever. So I, in, in all transparency, the last couple, I've maybe had about four of them that have come to me. The last couple I have included our co-chair, Eric, in those for his comment, comments and thoughts. What my feeling is, and I don't know if you guys all agree, or if you want to do it differently, is I believe all, everybody should at least see the letter. And you know, we don't want to get into a big minutia story because we've already discussed it, but if you have something that it doesn't feel right in that letter, then we can discuss that before it gets sent to the board. So that was my main impetus for this kind of conversation right here is just so, are you guys interested in seeing that letter? Do you not want to? Again, it's not for you to just rip it all apart because the letters that the staff sends are pretty, pretty well written. You know, Eric had some, some comments on one and we forwarded those two, but we don't want to get wrapped up, wrapped around the axle in, at this point in the process, but I believe that you guys should see it. So I'm asking you for thoughts and Jennifer, I don't know if that's even, I'm assuming it's lawful if we just do that.
I mean, the, these are your letters, so staff writes them as a service to record what your deliberations and your emotion and votes are and then provides them back to you for approval and signature, editing, changing. So these are your letters. You could write them yourself. We don't even have to write them for you. But I just want to be aware of the fact that editing of letters and changing of letters should, needs to be done in an open public meeting. So it would have to be a process step, but we added where the, after the meeting where you make the motion and vote on the recommendation, that could be submitted. Well, staff would draft a letter and then submit that to you in your next packet for your next meeting for you to finalize and sign. I think that would be the only way to do it and be compliant with the OPMA. So we weren't having email meetings basically going over drafts. That's, that's all I would worry about. So it would add a process step is all I want to point out.
Okay. Thoughts from the receiver? Go ahead, Doug.
I guess I have to depend on the officers and I'd say that if you think that the, the letter represents what we said and discussed and, and then I'm fine with you taking the helm and doing that. If you think it isn't quite what we recommended or is written in a way that implies something different or you're concerned about it, then I would like to see it come back to us to
I believe that the letters that I've, that I've been asked to sign represent what we're saying. The, the one we added an addendum to was just kind of expanding on what we had said. So that was, that was like the difference.
And, and I just wanted to point out that that's super helpful and the findings part is the, is the really instructive part for the Board of County Commissioners. So the more you discuss in your deliberations during your motion on a recommendation and maybe do a roll call vote. So the votes are very clear on where people are, which is, I don't think what we're necessarily doing right now, but you know, Eric, how do you vote? Donna, how do you vote? Make sure everybody has a clear vote. Then have a really robust discussion where you talk about the findings that you want included in your recommendation. That would be helpful at the front end of the process before you even do your final vote because that all gets recorded. And then, you know, those are the notes that will be put in the, in the draft letter. Again, the letter is ascribed to what you do. It is not staff perspective on what you do. It's taken from your words and it's put to paper and it's really an administrative process. So whatever words that you want to say in your deliberation and have reflected in the letter, we will do that. And then if you wanted to have that extra process step of checking those words, that would be done at that follow-up meeting.
Okay. So since I wrote that addendum, when I wrote that addendum, I, I basically went right off of my notes. There wasn't really anything separate from the deliberation from the note. So I'm a little unsure if that would actually be an OPMA violation since there was nothing new being, being added.
Oh, no, it wasn't. No, it was perfect. It was great. Oh, no, it wasn't. No, it was perfect. It was great. That's exactly what we want. So I sent the draft letter to Jim. The timing got a little, I think you sent, or Jim asked you and you sent your addendum the next day. Anyway, we got it. It was fine. But that's exactly right. Like that sending the draft to the Chair and then the Chair's job is to make sure it represents the findings of the group and add what other ever information. When I was Chair, I would add a bunch of things. I would like write big pieces of the letters for the planning commission, right? Because I wanted to have all the findings very clear. And that, that is something that you can absolutely do. So yeah, that was perfect. Those findings were super helpful and instructive.
Done.
I believe a communication one-on-one between commission members does not violate the Open Meetings Act and, and would be perfectly acceptable.
I don't, I don't think that that's the question. I think we're all kind of adhering to that. It's just more of like, is this a group thing you guys want to do all together? Or, or do we continue as we're, as we're going? But I guess what Jennifer, what I hear her say also is maybe after we've kind of just, in our discussions, let's be more robust and talk about the things that you want to include possibly in the letter so that that gets included. But then again, do you want to see it after that? Or are you comfortable with? Are you comfortable with not seeing it? Right? I want to make sure that what you guys are saying and how it's getting said, you're, you're good with. You know, so that everything that we're saying today is we can move forward. And, and you all believe that that's what we, that's what we're talking about. And that's what, that's, that was your intent. I want to make sure that our intent is going well to the board. So they know what we're kind of talking about. Go ahead, Don.
And I agree, Jim. An open communication to all members on the communication to persuade or dissuade is not acceptable. It has to be one-on-one and it's not something that could be used to change opinion.
I think that once we have voted on something and that's, and we've all agreed on that, then if there's a minority opinion, then that can be stated in a separate letter. Or if we're all on, on the same page, then I just want to make sure that you guys are, are reading it and seeing it and making sure that this is the intent that you had whenever you spoke up or whatever your thoughts were. Eric, I saw you come off for a sec. You?
Well, I, well, I just wanted to say that if, if the way that we did this from, from our two weeks ago vote is acceptable, then I think that's great. And continuing along that line is, is just fine for me. But if I need to modify something that I'm doing, I would be more than happy to modify something that I'm doing.
I said it to you honestly because you're the co-chair. And so it seemed like that was, that would have been appropriate. They were somewhat appropriate at the time. So, okay, Don. Oh, you're muted, Don. Don, you're muted.
If we are in a discussion and somebody has a persuasive argument, that is not something that is not counted by the Public Meetings Act. A discussion is extremely acceptable for trying to persuade others to agree with you.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And we're not, we're not trying to stifle any of that. So we just want to make sure that when, after our discussions, that it gets relayed to the board in the way, in the intent that we all were, were thinking. And that's why I just was kind of wondering if you guys wanted to see that to make sure that that's how you, that's the way it was, comes across to you. So.
Again, I think that I'm, I'm fine with our officers reviewing it. And if they want to expand on it, do it. And I don't need to see it. But it would be nice to see it after the fact, to see what actually got recommended. So I can put it in my folder and, and then down the road, maybe I'll say, oh, wait a minute. These aren't quite right or whatever, you know? So then I'll be more critical later. But right now I'm happy with the officers doing it.
How about you, Scott? You're pretty quiet over there. Have a thought?
Um, yeah, I guess I, I, I like the way we're doing it. I'm fine with if, you know, I think if you have a question about something, yeah, either talk to Eric or, you know, if it's something that somebody specifically said that you want in included, go to that planning commissioner. You know, and, but it worries me if we're going to have our discussion, make a recommendation, and then come back two weeks later and talk about the letter. I mean, that's going to put, we take a lot of time to do a lot of things. That's going to push everything we do out even further.
So, so what I'm hearing is we continue doing the same. If I have a question of what a, a specific commissioner's thought was, was I would check with them and then edit the letter. And then we can see the final one afterwards. I'll sign it and forward it to the board. Does that sound right? Okay, Jennifer, I think we're there.
Awesome. No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions about procedures since we're on this issue. I know that, that with this last round when we were doing the CIP minor amendment, there, there was a difference in staff recommendations and planning commission recommendations. And as such, a planning, the Chair or his designee should have been invited to the work session. And there's two work sessions held, June 3rd and June 8th. During both of those work sessions, without a planning commissioner there to represent our opinions, there was a lot of speculation on the deliberations of the planning commission or what they were thinking and those kinds of things. And I'm not sure who invites people to the work session. I don't know if that's, I, I think work sections are actually the county manager's purview. So he might be doing those. I don't know if, if, when it says that the planning department is supposed to do the notification. I don't, I don't know who exactly is supposed to do the notification where a planning commissioner could come and represent their recommendation. But that didn't happen. And I think that it would have been very useful for not only the public, but also for the Board of County Commissioners to hear exactly how we came to these kinds of decisions, what our thought processes were, because they, they specifically asked what our thought processes were and what our deliberations were about. And I guess, I guess I want to know where this fell apart.
Nothing fell apart. Procedures were followed. I understand your frustration since a lot was said about the planning commission and what their mindset might have been when the board was having their conversation. The procedures say that planning staff have a different recommendation than the planning commission. Then we will contact the Chair and the Chair or the Chair's designee will have an opportunity to attend the board work session. Planning staff did not have a different recommendation. Planning staff transmitted the planning commission's recommendation to the board. Other staff involved in this project in the county had thoughts and feelings about the recommendation and about this project. And they made their thoughts and feelings clear to the board during the board's deliberations. But planning staff followed the exact procedure laid out in the rules of procedure. I do believe it's on the discretion of the board who they want to invite to their work sessions. If they wanted to make a special invitation to have someone else be joining in in the work session. Obviously, all of these work sessions are open to the public, but in terms of participating and, and speaking, I believe it's at the discretion of the board. And I can get some clarity from the board office on that and how they want to do that. And then if a planning commissioner wants to attend, I think reaching directly out to the board office to make that request is, is probably a good way to go as well. So I can find out a little bit more about their procedures and how they invite or don't invite folks to those briefings and work sessions. Happy to.
Maybe this is just a, some kind of technicality, but to me it seems a little disgenuous to say that staff and the planning commission had different recommendations. Because when we started this, you even said that you hope to come away with a recommendation. And then on the, it says that you wanted to amend the 2021-2026 CIP with updated financial information. So you guys wanted to do something, but then to say that that wasn't your recommendation, that, that, that doesn't seem to jive with me.
Well, let me make it clear. Staff's roles to facilitate the process. So we were facilitating a pathway to get a recommendation from the planning commission to facilitate the legislative process. So we didn't have a recommendation pro or con on this particular set of amendments. And that's clear. That was not communicated to the board of particular staff, planning staff recommendation. We communicated the planning commission's recommendation to the Board of County Commissioner, and that's our job.
So do you, like the last time we did a CIP update or a comp plan update, did the staff have a recommendation then?
Not that I recall. We, we often do not have staff recommendations. That's kind of our practice. We are acting in a facilitator role. I think where we do have recommendations is if we are perceiving something that might run the county into an area of maybe legal risk or, or a, a risk for what the community has expressed and that, that may not jive with the planning commission recommendation. That was the case last year, as Scott recalls about the ag and forestry designations. But we try to play a facilitative role for the legislative process and make sure that your discussions and deliberations and recommendations are transmitted to the Board of County Commissioners. And they've also been able to, thankfully, because of the Zoom era, actually watch a lot of your conversations and get that firsthand experience of what you deliberated. So it's max transparency. And if the planning staff ever does have a differing recommendation, the procedures are very clear that we let you know that. And we make that allowance for you to attend that work session where the recommendation's presented to the board.
Yeah, I, I guess it just seems weird to me that we can have a county init, or a county initiated amendment, but that is not the staff recommendation to do. And because of that, when there is a difference of opinion between the planning commission and others, that, that doesn't count as a difference.
I don't, maybe I'm not understanding your question perfectly clearly. The planning staff did not have a recommendation to do or to not do this amendment. We transmitted your recommendation to the board.
All right. Should I also assume then that the other people that were invited to those work sessions were invited by either the board or the county manager, but not planning staff?
Yes, the board has people at their work sessions who they wanted their work sessions to hear from. And so I would be comfortable with you making that assumption. I don't know because I don't do the invites to their board work sessions, unless it's myself and my staff who are presenting something.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess on, on this discussion, one thing that I just thought of is maybe it would be a good idea to send us the links to the web meetings when the county commissioners are going to discuss something that we've done so that we at least know and can watch it. You know, it's, there's so much stuff going on. It's hard to keep track of everything.
I'm writing that down. Yeah, the one thing is they, they maintain their master schedule. It's online. So these, while, like I didn't tell you during staff updates, we have such and such briefing scheduled for this date. We have this briefing scheduled for this date. And they change and bump and move those briefings all the time. So you kind of have to pay attention to the board's website and master schedule. But when we know that a briefing's scheduled on an item that you have looked at, it's like good practice to let you know when that will be. It's actually in my notes to do that during staff updates for, for a couple of things. So yeah, we can, we can do our, our level best to get you the information about when they're next going to meet so you can follow along.
Go ahead, Doug.
We've asked this question before about having a planning commissioner in attendance at these briefings in case the commissioners would have a question of the whys and where it was and what we discussed. And the answer has been, can't do that. But in this case, staff should have known that there would be an issue between our decision and, and what the county manager wanted to do and, and whatnot. And it, it would, I think it would be their responsibility, staff, in doing the facilitation of the transfer of information would make it a, known that a planning commissioner should, could be there to answer those questions. I think that that should be a function of staff.
Okay, so good conversation, everybody. It's all been noted. And we will see where we can get with this. I do think it's important that our message comes across and how we can do that. We, we need to figure out the best way we can do that.
You might be in favor of even sending a, a letter or attending a, a Board of County Commissioners meeting and, and presenting it. Tell them what.
Yeah. And, and that's a little bit of the stimulus to having you guys read the letter. I mean, I think Eric did a really good job on the, the amendment to that, the last letter that we sent and explained our, our side very well and what we were thinking and what, what we thought the public thought was. So.
I, I really think we missed a, a big opportunity to communicate how we felt about things. And it was apparent to me that the B OCC had a lot of questions and that a lot of those questions could have been answered by more than our one-page recommendation. And to be, to not be involved in that was, was disappointing, especially when I was called by name during the meeting and I'm not even there to say anything. And, you know, it's not just so much to defend myself, but also to defend our process. We went through a pretty deliberate process on this, just like everybody else does. And to discount that is, is frankly, it's pretty disappointing. And often things in those work sessions got really farther away. There is assumptions being made about our recommendations that were not our recommendations. There was a lot of talk about how we felt about the Mottman project when we made no recommendation about the Mottman project other to postpone making a recommendation until we got more information. And, and so there was a lot of conflation there that could have been sorted out by one of us telling exactly what we thought and how we felt about things. And it does feel like that, it, it feels like we got caught up in some kind of legalese about, well, even though we wanted this, we didn't make a formal recommendation, so it doesn't really count. So you don't really get to go there. That, that kind of bugs me, gets in my craw. It seems like it's kind of a easy way out instead of facilitating more information. It's kind of shutting it down. So I would, I would like to, I know that when we brought this to subject up before about having a planning commissioner at work sessions, the county manager had said, no, he doesn't want that to happen unless it is required because of a minor or because of a dissenting recommendation. I think that policy is a mistake. And I think that the county commissioners, in this case, clearly we're looking for more information and we're not able to get it. And I don't believe that that was a failure on the planning commission's part as much as it was on the people between the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners.
Any other thoughts?
Just one. I, I would like to recommend that anytime there is a communication between the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners, that it be sent to all of us.
Okay. So thank you all for that. Great discussion. A lot of stuff to think about and a lot of stuff for staff to chew on and, you know. And to keep moving forward and doing what we do. Okay, so let's move on. If, if, if everybody's good on this, on this one, can we, we're ready to move on? Anything else? I'm not seeing anybody come up with anything. So we're moving on to our shoreline master program. The work session there with the review. All you, Andrew.
Okay, great. Okay, so tonight we will continue the discussion of the shoreline stabilization development standards that we talked about on June 2nd. We, we were in the middle of the memo that, or the comments that Commissioner We we were in the middle of the memo that, or the comments that Commissioner Carmen put together on the staff memo on the topic. So we can pick up where we left off there. Also look at the written policies for lake water quality that Commissioner Carmen put forward. And then, time permitting, we'll we'll dive into the appendices. So as always, I'm looking for specific amendments to text or options, specific options that you want to put in your upcoming public hearing draft. And so, yes, Commissioner Carmen was the only one to submit me written comments on this topic, but, you know, feel free, rest of the planning commission to to please weigh in as we move forward through the memo. To catch us up from the last meeting, I did note the changes that the PC requested, or at least the one that was requested, which was to drop the requirement for a geotechnical report for replacement of stable shoreline stabilization structures. So state law does not require it for replacement structures. It does require it for new structures. And I have now changed the draft to reflect that state law and also the the will of the planning commission. I also made a note for further discussion about including appurtenances and uses when it comes to protecting shoreline or residential structures. That was, I just to put a, put a pin in that for when we actually get into the text of chapter nineteen six hundred to to bring that up. So according to my notes, we were on the memo section regarding ancillary structures in in Commissioner Carmen's comments. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and pull that up. There we go. Hopefully. Okay. There we go. All right, is everyone seeing the the memo? Hopefully, okay. So kind of what we did last time was because Commissioner Carmen took the time to write out his comments and questions and things on these, on this memo. I figured we could just continue through his review of those comments and letting us know what he was thinking. So I'll turn it over to you, if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay. So it sounds from what you just said, you've already included appurtenances and uses, so that's what that comment there is about.
I I did not, not yet. I marked it for, I think the place to have that discussion is once we get into the actual text, because I think that's where we're going to want to make that.
Okay, so you marked it in the actual text, right?
I made a, I made a note, yeah. Yep. So yeah, I think this is kind of part and parcel with that other conversation. So yeah, so I can keep moving through if that's okay. Let me scroll down to the next comment you had, which was in this description of eutrophication that I included.
Under the algae. You know, my my point here is this alone is justification to limit those natural and artificial contributions to the tro- eutrophication of lakes. And and those of you who were here last meeting, I pointed out that it's not just water running off from shoreline properties into the lake. That's a very minor part of putting stuff in the lake. The major part is stormwater runoff and that which comes through springs in the lakes, which is contributed by property that is well away from the lake. And so the more lake becomes eutrophied or or dying, the more algae you're going to get. And so the goal should be, and I I listed a a policy that could be added to treat you to protect you to lakes that are dying in a different way than mountain lakes and pristine lakes. And so so basically, you're looking at urban lakes versus rural lakes, but to treat them differently. The development around is growing so fast with houses and dumping or concentrating water in the stormwater and dumping them into lakes, which brings pollutants as well as nourishment for the algae. And so we need, we need to take care of that in this document. So that's enough on that one, I think. If someone has questions about it.
And was this, this the topic of one of the two policies that you that you proposed, is that right?
Right.
Okay, so yeah, and I think once we get through.
Back to those.
Yeah, exactly. I was planning to come back to those at the end, yeah. And I I guess it makes sense that maybe we should just go ahead and go to the S N P document now and do this run stabilization, because I'm realizing and remembering that this document is in two, it's in two different topics essentially, or two different policy areas. So why don't we do that? Why don't we go to the document while the shoreline stabilization stuff is still fresh?
But would you like me to go over what the recommendations were before we do that?
The, for the policy or?
Well, the 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 actual letter that I sent you that gave you the policy suggestions and then the result, the recommendation as a result of all of these comments.
Sure, go for it.
Okay, you want to go back? Can you throw up that other letter and then everybody can read it?
Wait, I think you put that at the end.
It was a cover, there it is. So if you go down to nineteen three hundred one fifteen is a is a good goal. It's already in the the S N P. So it's, it's, it's about water quality, but it doesn't go far. So I have two recommendations for additional policies within the S N P. The first one is prevent the introduction of sediment in eutropic lakes, wetland encroachment and shoreline erosion, which accelerates the aging of these lakes. Degrades water quality, impacts aesthetic qualities, recreational opportunity and causes adverse effects on the shoreline ecological function. And then the other one is stormwater runoff. Stormwater outfalls into the rivers, streams, lakes and marine environment should be eliminated and diverted into settling ponds to reduce organic harmful chemicals and waste from entering these water bodies and endanger water quality and contributing to algae growth. The stream teams, seventy-five percent of the pollution in our waters in state have come from stormwater runoff. Now, the, as a result of my comments on your memo, I added another one, which would actually two, one is in section nineteen one fifty-two ten, which is the definition of bulkheads. And I just suggest that you, that we change the purpose of protect, the bulkhead purpose of protecting an existing single-family residence and then comma, a pertinent structures and shorelines of eutropic lakes from loss by damage of erosion. So looking at eutrophication of lakes as being a an issue for water quality and we need to do what we can. Bulkheads can help doing that. And that same comment then would go in nineteen six hundred one seventy-five B two. So we can address that when we get to that one, but that would take both.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, if that if that is somewhere the planning commission want, wanted to go as far as the definition, then we would want that corresponding language in section nineteen six hundred one seventy-five, because it currently would not include that. And so we would want to make sure that it carried through the document, if that is what the planning commission, if that's ultimately where you land. Okay, so yeah, maybe it's not as clean as I thought here. Was there anything else? Let me ask you this, Doug, is there anything else in the memo here that's on the screen that you wanted to highlight before we move over to the document? Or do you think we've, have we?
I just hope that people read what I sent out so that they'd understand what I'm talking about with eutrophic lakes. I'm managing a lake. I know what's the problems are with eutrophic lakes. We've just spent a ton of money trying to get rid of algae, and we'll continue to spend a ton of money. And it's a function of the introduction of of nutrients into the lake and it's not coming from the houses around the lake. They're coming from other houses in the county. All the development.
Does anyone else have questions on any of Commissioner Carmen's comments on the memo? Otherwise, okay, great. So I can go back to the document, and I think we can, we can go through chapter nineteen six hundred one seventy-five, which are the development standards for shoreline stabilization. And then at the end of that, we can see if anyone is interested in in, you know, putting in those policy pieces as well. So the stuff that would go in chapter nineteen three hundred and then, you know, the definition change. But I'll start with the development standards for shoreline stabilization in nineteen six hundred, because I think that's really where the majority of the conversation will lie. So let me stop sharing one screen and switch over to another. Okay, so hopefully you are seeing chapter nineteen six hundred one seventy-five shoreline stabilization development standards. So as we go through, you'll see that there have been some edits that have already been made. You know, there are still some changes to happen throughout the document that I'm still working on based on your review, but you know, a lot of things have been incorporated already. So as I mentioned last time, I changed the permit requirements per the planning commission's direction to essentially say that in no case is shoreline stabilization going to require a conditional use permit. It's either going to be exempt from an S D P or substantial development permit based on state law. And if it's not exempt, it's going to be just an S D P and not a conditional use permit. That was a change the planning commission already has discussed. Okay, so I guess I'm just going to go ahead and say, are there any comments or questions on section A? And if not, section B. And if not there, we'll go ahead to section C, application requirements.
B two, wait a minute, Andrew. B two. That's where I was making that comment that a normal protective bulkhead includes those structural and non-structural developments installed at or near a relative or had for the sole purpose of protecting an existing family residence, then put a comma a pertinent structures and shoreline and the shoreline of eutrophic lakes from loss.
So I'm just going to put it on the screen here so we can all see it. This is something that's, so that statement about normal protective bulkheads, that comes out of the WAC. So that is something that I I want to be, again, be clear. And, you know, from reading the memo, it's fairly clear what my review has led led me to is that, you know, we are putting the language in here from the WAC, and I can put, I can make amendments to this, and we can send that to public hearing and to ecology. But I can't, I can't guarantee you how they're going to react to that or whether, you know, that will ultimately survive. But, you know, the purpose of these work sessions is to capture the planning commission's vision and guide you as as best I can and, you know, make this document look the way you want it to look.
And Sarah Castle has said, though, that as long as you, some things, as long as you set them up correctly, that they will, they might be open to like, accepting something like this. That's one of the reasons for the policy shift, or not shift, but adding the policies in the beginning.
And I think I, you know, yeah, yes. And in reviewing everything, getting ready for this meeting, this is one of the topics I have now studied the most in the whole update. But, you know, there is some latitude given to local jurisdictions as to how we define certain things, such as what we consider a primary structure versus an accessory structure. I know that the, you know, and the WAX, they don't help because, in all cases, they don't help, because you read something further up and it seems to allow something, and then you keep reading, and then it's clearly prohibited. So, you know, the, for example, in the the part of the WAX that talks about exemptions from a substantial development permit, it states that the purpose of a bulkhead is to protect residential uses or primary residential structures and their appurtenances. It it says that in black and white. But then when you get down to their language in the WAX, it also then says you can only do a new structural stabilization to protect a, you know, existing primary structure. It's, it stops talking about appurtenances at that point. So that may be the way that that we need to do this. And again, opening it up to planning commission, if if you wish for me to make this change, is to kind of start from from there, start from the definition, start from the policy section and then work, work through it. And ultimately, you know, we're going to have to give ecology and and the public the the chance to react to it and then see where everything lands on the other side of public hearing. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the planning commission. Are folks amenable to this edit to the text?
I'm, I'm, I don't. And I know you've done a lot, a lot of work on this, Doug, a lot more than I am. I'm just trying to figure out, how does a, how does a bulkhead protect the lake?
The erosion of the shoreline and the plants and whatnot of the long shoreline contributes to the eutrophication of the lake, the aging of the lake, the death of the lake. And so we don't want dirt and and stuff getting into the lake, because it 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 speeds up its death. And a lake that is already.
We're talking a hard, a hard type bulkhead, like concrete.
Well, hard type or just something that a a bulkhead that that protects the shoreline from erosion, whether it's concrete or or logs or whatever other hybrid systems they might have, as long as it doesn't erode too, that can work. You know, concrete bulkhead is not the best thing to put in the lake, because it reflects the waves, which is not good. But the key is protecting shoreline from erosion, because it accelerates the eutrophication of the lake.
And I'm glad you made that that clarification there, because, yeah, depending on the type of structure you use, it can actually exacerbate erosion. And that's one reason that, you know, hard stabilization can be found upon and reflecting the wave energy and undercutting underneath the bulkhead, things like that, that can happen. Not to mention, you know, when one piece of the shoreline is hardened and others are not, it can lead to erosion of those, you know, connecting or neighboring shorelines as well. So of course, the the devil's in the details. So I will ask the question, are, how does the the rest of the planning commission as a whole feel about making the change that's suggested? Seeing a couple of thumbs up. And how about Jim and Scott and Kevin? Anyone want to weigh in? Scott's nodding. Okay. Okay. So, okay, and again, I'm, I can write this up, and, you know, this can go forward, and this may be something that I ask for some more immediate review from the state and our folks over there, just to know kind of how it's going to be received or how we might be able to address this. But, okay, I will take that down. So give me one sec. Yeah, and I think there's going to be other sections of the documents, as as Commissioner Carmen has noted, that will need to be amended to address this. So let's move forward. So letter C, application requirements. Does anyone have comments there?
The main, the main comment I had under application requirements is, most of them apply primarily to marine environment, not lakes. And and marine environment, river environments, using bulkheads is significantly can impact downriver or down sound or, you know, there's a lot of different characteristics. I'm not sure what point I'm trying to make, other than make everybody aware that most of these apply to marine versus lake.
Well, so I think, and we've had this conversation before about whether application requirements can be amended depending on the specific proposal. And currently, as stated here, it mentions, you know, applications for shore protection and bluff stabilization shall include the following information when applicable. So theoretically, someone could make that point, you know, based on whatever specific circumstances they wish to. you know, based on whatever specific circumstances they wish to, whatever circumstances they have, they can make that point that some things are not, don't apply to them. But if you wanted to, you know, we could certainly put a more finer, put a finer point on that here and say, say something like that about specifically lakes versus marine. You know, in the case of lakes, the approval authority may determine or may, you know, approve or allow, you know, fewer applications to middle or something like that. My words are not coming to me, but you get the gist, you know, essentially guiding, getting guiding language in there for the approval authority to say, yeah, we don't need to have, you know, A, B, and C from this proposal. We need, you know, D, E, and F instead.
Or just saying that some requirements are more applicable to marine and, or to lake. And so discretion should be used. I'm just speaking out loud.
Yeah, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna start capturing that, just so we have it provided.
And Andrew, that could be more put in, in the introduction to the chapters or to the shoreline?
For shoreline stabilization?
No, well, for the, the difference in that some may not all apply to, it's the terms of the lake and.
Again, this is something I'm kind of typing and capturing. I would want to potentially do more research to educate myself on this. So I don't really have a, I don't have a position on it one way or the other. I'm just capturing for now. Is this something that the planning commission as a body is interested in keeping in there or putting in there? Like Jim and Doug, I know are in support. How about?
And I think it's helpful to the regulating body.
I'd like to see it in there.
Okay. Okay. And so, so I don't run away from it before we capture it here. So, yeah, providing the approval authority with the ability to amend application requirements, I'll put for the specific shoreline environments. Lake versus marine. So does that seem to capture it fairly well, Doug?
Sure.
Okay, great. All righty. Hit save. Okay. So moving on. And so, yeah, I think that was at least noted in here for, you know, longshore draft, which is not a function of our freshwater shorelines. But yeah, so now it will be in there for, you know, other, for these other pieces as well. Okay, anything else on the application requirements? And if not, I'm gonna go down to the development standards. And I think this is where the majority of amendments may happen. So I'll open that up. And I'm gonna kind of scan based on the conversation we've just been having to see if I, if anything jumps out at me. But go ahead and let me know what pieces you see or comments you already have.
I have a note under C. And unfortunately, I didn't make a very good note because I don't remember now what it pertained to. But it says, my note says, it doesn't consider RCW ninety point five, one oh, one hundred point six, or WAC one seventy-three, twenty-six, twenty-three. I think it has to do with non-structural methods and I apologize, I didn't go back and figure that note out.
Yeah. Well, I think, and again, I don't want to put myself on the spot, but I'm pretty sure this comes from the WAC explicitly, that non-structural measures are to be considered before you move to anything structural. And then down in C, Roman numeral two, it states what those non-structural methods are. And moves into.
I'll have to do some more research on why it didn't meet the RCW or the WAC or.
And we will have plenty of, plenty of time on the other side of public hearing to go through everything that, all the comments we received from the public and, you know, things the planning commission has thought of as well. But also, this is gonna, you know, come back to you for final check at a future meeting. And, you know, when we set the hearing, you know, as we're setting it with a document that, you know, has considered all the things that you have looked at. So you've got a little bit of time there if you, if you think of something. Okay. So I'm gonna scroll through our development standards here and let me know where you want me to stop. I can think of at least one area I know we're gonna have some comments on.
Under two. See one. Deleted. Why, why did we take that out?
So I took that out because, and yeah, that language was originally in there. It originally did say primary pertinent structures and uses because that was Sarah Castle's comment at the time is that that's inconsistent with the WAC. This was essentially cut and paste from the WAC and, you know, that was not in there. And, you know, it's, this is where it's, I think it's kind of tricky to amend this specific language because, you know, the WAC is pretty clear that jurisdictions shall not authorize new structural stabilization unless it's for these following very clear things. So that's where I'm wondering if this other piece that the planning commission is contemplating for eutrophic lakes, if that belongs as, at the end, perhaps, or I don't know. But I just, there might be, they might be more amenable perhaps to adding that on versus, you know, amending what's essentially quote from state statute. Because, yeah, we have, you know, letter C and then Roman numeral one through whatever four here. And that might be an alternative or an option to place it at the end, you know, to protect water quality in eutrophic lakes or prevent the further, further maturation of eutrophic lakes, or however you want to say that. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And that's not gonna get us at not necessarily gonna get us at the, the other uses or the ancillary structures, you know, but so you can also talk about that or propose something there if you'd like to. But I don't know. Those are just my thoughts as to how, how we would go about this or how you could about this.
Sounds like a good strategy.
Okay. So what does the rest of the planning commission think? What I'm proposing here would be to add the piece about eutrophic lakes to the end? To make a Roman numeral five?
I'm with Doug on that.
Okay. And how the rest of folks feel? Jim is nodding. Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna make a note here to capture that. Yeah. And so, let me give you one second here. I want to check something in my notes. Because I didn't want to leave this conversation before we address the other piece of this, which was the other, you know, appurtenances and uses. Okay. So, yeah, I think, I mean, again, feel free to propose something and we can, you know, take it to hearing and see what kind of feedback we get. But I found there was a little bit more, it seemed a little more leeway in the WAC for, you know, replacing a bulkhead when the purpose is to prevent damage to appurtenances versus, you know, putting in a new one because you have an existing single family home and you have all your other appurtenances out there, your gazebo and, you know, deck and all that stuff. Really, the WACs say it's that primary structure that, you know, you need to be protecting and not necessarily be a pertinent. So, you know, you could look at potentially making a, you know, defining primary structure because it's not technically defined in the, in the document, or something like that. But, you know, again, I think the WACs are pretty clear as they are written. So I'll turn that over to you guys. And if not, we can move forward to number three. Okay, I will keep.
Sorry, Andrew, are you looking for a suggestion on?
I, I'm looking for something because the unresolved issue or the, the, the comments that were in the mem, the comments you made on the memo and then comments that I've heard Commissioner Casino make at other meetings were, what about protecting ancillary things? So, you know, I've got a house on Puget Sound and it's got a gazebo and a fire pit and all these other things. And the bluff is, is retreating and, you know, my, my gazebo or my fire pit is in danger. The house, maybe not, but these other things. And, you know, is that something? I've heard concern from planning commission about, you know, the, the draft not allowing for protection of, of ancillary structures. And that's true, as written, you, you know, you would need a geotechnical analysis to say that your primary structure is threatened before we would allow a new structural stabilization.
Right. But primary, primary structure isn't defined. So a gazebo on the beach could be a primary structure.
Yeah, it's, it's not defined. I, again, I, that, it may be a slippery slope because, you know, we can kind of think about all the different things that make up residential use. And some of them are clearly subordinate to the main house. But, you know, in looking at what the planning commission has expressed an interest in exploring, to me, that is a means of at least trying to, you know, accomplish what you're, what you're trying to do. I don't know how far it'll get, but I know that as written, you know, this would not allow, allow for that. So I just want to make sure we don't leave it before you have the opportunity to attempt to address that.
I think there are. There's something, I, I get what you're saying, Andrew. And, and I don't know, but, you know, I don't feel that my home is in danger, but I want to keep as much of the bank around as I possibly can. So that is my concern. It's not the, that I have a gazebo or a fire pit I'm trying to save. I just don't want my property to wash away. And, you know, even though, even if it's only a couple of feet at a time, I, there's noticeably, it's gone. You know, I mean, from when I moved in, my lot is smaller. And that's the piece where I guess I have a little bit of problem. I want to make sure that somebody's able to replace their bulkhead if they're having that kind of a deal. If, and if, you know, I'm good with the geotechnical stuff and all that. But if, I don't know, I don't know how you word that or how you say it, but I'm just looking to save my property as much as I can for as long as I can, so I can have use of it.
And, and even.
So.
Oh, it says specifically that it's, it's the primary residence. It says in enough other places in both the WAC and the RCW about uses and appurtenances, that there should be an opening somehow to protect that stuff.
You know, talk to. I think the opening is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, talk to the people that had houses down in Grayling. They lost their, every, all their property.
So I think, what was I gonna say? The, the way to address that, I think, is for the planning commission to suggest some, some new language versus what is written. Because I, I recognize that the WACs and the policy language seems to leave an open door for, for perhaps more instances where structural stabilization would be allowed. But for me, where that door kind of narrows or where the rubber meets the road is those specific standards where they say, you know, you shall not authorize except for one through four. That, that is clear. Point, that's a, that's a requirement, that's a mandate. And so unless something is done to amend that language or state something else, you know, I don't think that we're gonna accomplish exactly what, what you're saying, at least for the, well, let me also say, however, I scrolled back up to this section here. So let's say for, so Chair Simmons, for your scenario, you know, where you have a lot that it's just casually eroding, right? It's not at a rate that is going to put the struct, the primary structure in danger in any immediate timeframe. But if someone gets a geotech and has that inspected, you know, this language here is saying that, you know, if a geotech report determines that the need to protect a primary structure is not as immediate as three years, it could still be used to justify more immediate authorization to protect against erosion, erosion using soft measures. So there is still an allowance in here. If someone gets a geotech report because there's erosion, there's still an allowance to do a more, more soft methods to try to stop that erosion and, you know, stop it from accelerating or, or further threatening that primary structure in, in future years. And so perhaps that addresses your concern, perhaps not. But I just wanted to point out that this language is in, in the document.
So, let's see. Sometimes when I think about it, Andrew, it's, you know, I hear the talk that, okay, you're not in immediate danger when you are, then we'll really address this. So that's the part that bugs me. I, you know, I mean, give me the opportunity, even though it's not immediate danger. And I don't know, maybe this is what you're talking about, this, the ability to do that. But if I, I get that my home's not in immediate danger, why do I have to wait till it gets there before I can do something?
Right. And this is saying that we would not, you would not have to wait in that. Maybe that becomes something that's more of a public outreach piece that we can promote, you know, and I, but I also want to say, you know, the intent is not to allow bulkheads to, and retaining laws to start going up on every single property, you know, that is lakeside or Puget Sound. And we know that there are, there are ecological detriments that come from that type of development. And, you know, we're not trying to, so that's, it's the balancing point, right, of, of trying to address legitimate erosion issues and prevent, stop them before they, you know, threaten primary structures versus, you know, allowing a loophole that, you know, allows any bulkhead anywhere for any reason. So, but this language is in here, it's been here, you know, the fact that it's just black and white text means that we have not changed it at any point during our review. So hopefully that will address those concerns. But, yeah, I mean, again, this is why we're here, if there's any changes that anyone would propose.
Hi, Andrew. Actually, I'm in favor of any language with, that will allow people to protect the property that they already have and, and not see it become eroded.
Okay. Yeah. And I think it's just gonna, there's gonna be, there will be some discretion that's, that is, you know, used by planning staff because I think elsewhere in this document, it talks about shoreline stabilization not being used for the purpose of protecting yards and, and things like that. It specifically says that now. So that may be something, just to draw your attention to as a policy piece and whether, you know, the planning commission wants to amend that because I could see that kind of flying contradictory to what Commissioner DeHaan just said.
Andrew, here's the reality of it. I mean, I understand we have to go by the laws and all the RCWs and WACs. But the reality of it is, the property owner is gonna do what they want to do. I see bulkheads going up all over the place and they're, they got, all gotta be not permitted. And that's why that little pamphlet that we've been talking about is so important. So if you tell people what they can do, they'll be, they'll be more in the frame of mind of doing it right, instead of, well, they tell me I can't do any of this stuff, so I'm just gonna do it on my own and they'll never catch me. We already have an incidence of that with a large piece of property on Long Lake where the developer just went ahead and started cutting down trees and within 200 feet of the water and job got red tagged twice, but the planning department isn't doing very much at all. So enforcement is anyway. My two bits.
Okay. So here's this piece that I'm, yeah, right here, letter F, under the development standards, talks about how stabilization should not be for the purpose of creating dry land, leveling or extending property, creating or preserving residential lawns, yards or landscaping shall not be allowed, except when otherwise allowed in this section due to health and safety. So I don't know if there is a, I guess it all comes down to the geotech, right? It comes down to a report that, you know, It comes down to a report that, you know, someone goes out there and does, you know, does an analysis and submits all the materials that we ask for. And the conclusion is that there is active erosion. That's going to, you know, that's going to have to be what carries the day. As this is written, because otherwise, if it's just, you know, I have a slope on this property, it theoretically could erode, but it's not actively doing it now. This would serve to not allow stabilization. Okay. So are there any? Let's see, where were we? Okay, we were in number two.
That's, that's law, so we can't change that? Are you saying that there might be something we could say in F?
I, I don't think that that language specifically comes from, I would have to go back and look, but I don't recall seeing that specific language in, in the WAC. So I think it goes back to the whole overarching concept of only allowing shoreline modifications in limited instances and for the minimum amount necessary and where there's a demonstrated need and all of those things, you know, this, this is in line with that. I don't know that that is, that right there is a specific requirement from state law. I, if I had to gun to my head, I would say it's not.
And if it's not, I'd say take it out.
I agree. I, I have a hard time with that one. I mean, most of it I get. I don't, I don't care about creating new dry land, but when I'm preserving my residential lawns or yard, that part I have a problem with. I'm, that is the, that's the piece that rubs me. I'm just trying to preserve what I got. I don't care about adding anymore.
To me.
Keep what I have for my lifetime.
Okay. So what I, I think the way to do that here would be then to say, essentially take out, I guess, to take out the word preserving. So it would, let me, let's try that on for size and see what you all think.
Yeah, I'd say take preserving out and you'd be fine.
Okay. And again, this is still gonna, I mean, there's still gonna need to be a geotech report and you know, that's a robust analysis. And there's going to have to be a demonstrated erosion. And I don't know, perhaps we will need some more to beef that up somehow, because right now it says, you know, within three years for the primary structure, there isn't a whole lot of other guidance for other scenarios. But, okay, so, but I think this, this, in this section at least accomplishes what you all are asking for. So let me look at all your faces. Is that, does that work? Is that good? Okay. All right. Actually, I'm gonna put a note in the margin, just I keep track of all the changes that I make to this document since you last saw it. I keep a little ledger so I can, if someone asks me how it changed or why, I can tell them. So I will make a note here. When I wake up tomorrow and look at this, I'm not always going to remember why it's pink. I'll just know it is. Okay. All right. Moving forward. So again, we were kind of down here in two C, which to me is where the rubber meets the road on what we really can allow or not allow. And we've sort of addressed the, I, I put a note in here about the eutrophic lakes. I feel like we've addressed the issue about, you know, my house is not in danger, but other pieces of my property are, can I do something about that? We've got some, some things in here to go on. Okay. Is there anything else? I'm just going to keep scrolling. We'll come down to replacement and repair. Here's where I removed the, the geotech requirement for a replacing existing structure per planning commission guidance. Okay. Continuing down. If nothing else, that's the end of shoreline stabilization. Is there anything else? And I, I want to circle back to those two, the two policy pieces for chapter 300, but is there anything else in 19675?
Andrew, I'm sorry, I skipped over one that I was thinking about on shoreline stabilization on streams. It's actually the last one, number five, where it says use of shoreline armory to protect a platted lot where no primary use or structure present presently exists shall be prohibited. Does this mean that if somebody is going to do a subdevelopment, they got to build the first house before they're allowed to armor the shoreline? This will be. Armory or hard armoring or bulkhead-ing, but any kind of armoring, you got to build the first house before you can do anything in that plat?
Technically, if you go back up to that, let's see here. So go up to letter C, which is the, the pretty concrete rules from ecology. So number three here, so we can authorize bulkheads or hard stabilization in support of new non-water dependent development, including single family residences. So you're coming in and proposing something, you could propose shoreline stabilization as part of that, if it is absolutely necessary. And you know, the erosion is not being caused by upland conditions, that other means are not going to be sufficient. And you've gotten a geotech report. But yeah, as written, it would appear that you would need to be proposing a use that would need that stabilization before you could do that. So having a platted lot without any sort of proposed use, as written in this document, would not allow that. And I think that is, I mean, that statement's in line with the, these one through four scenarios. So I think that's why it's in there.
Well, I mean, just from a, from a practical standpoint, I can't imagine anybody actually going through the plating process without the intent to build the houses. I just don't know why you would do that. In fact, yeah, the expense involved to, to do a plat and then not build anything. I think.
And I think.
Clear that they're going to put a house there.
I think the residential development section talks about this. It talks about, you know, to the greatest extent, practical, practicable, new lots shall be, you shall avoid, you know, creating new lots that require it. But again, I think if that's all the land that you have and it is, you know, through a geotech report demonstrated that it is not a human safety issue, I think there is that provision made there. But existing lots that have not been built on, you know, as written, this would not allow stabilization unless there was a, you know, something there that needed, some sort of human primary structure development that needed protection.
Thank you.
Okay.
Under rivers, right?
I don't think so. I think it's just a separate statement.
Oh, it says shoreline stabilization on strings.
Right, but that's left number.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, and I will, I'll insert a, there, now there's a space. So now it, it actually is separated. So, okay. So still in, you know, development standards or policy world, I want to go back to the two policies that Commissioner Carmen discussed and see if there is, you know, support from planning commission on adding those to the document. So let me open those back up. I think we can knock those out and the definitions piece and then that. I think we can get through that if, if we can hold on a few more minutes. Okay. So here are the two policies that I have put up that Commissioner Carmen also read aloud earlier this evening. I'm just going to open it up for other planning commissioners to provide their thoughts on this and provide guidance on whether to include this in the document. There. Any other thoughts on putting these in? If not, we will move on.
Oh. Do you, is your being quiet mean you don't want them in?
I, I don't see a problem with putting them in. I don't know if they'll survive ecology, but I don't think that it's a bad idea to ask for those, because I think both those policies would, would do a lot for water quality.
Okay, that's two. Are there any, any more support? Jim, Scott? It's like, Commissioner DeHaan, you, you unmuted yourself?
I'm in favor of adding those.
Okay. Okay, I have made a note over here. And then, here Carmen, one more thing before we leave shoreline stabilization. And I think I'll probably have to go through and just do some scrub of the definitions myself, but you made a specific. Okay. So for the definition of bulkhead, you were thinking that would potentially need to be amended. Is that correct?
The definition for shoreline stabilization or bulkhead?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it reads exactly like its dates in the section we just did. The definition reads exactly the same as one 675 B2.
So one thing I'll also call your attention to, and this is kind of a sneak preview of a change that I have made to the document based on planning commission review. I have, for the purposes of planning commission conversation, put together a definition of bulkhead comma general. Essentially, it doesn't say comma general, but for bulkhead, because really the, the normal protective bulkhead that was defined in here, that is explicitly something that state law says, you know, if it's this, it's exempt from the requirements for an SDP. But there was no, you know, there was no conceptual conversation about what a bulkhead is, just in general sense. So there's a bit more language here. I mean, you don't have to get into it tonight, but just drawing your attention to that, that's changed. A change that I made based on planning commission conversation since you last saw a version of this document. Okay, so. Yeah. So, so again, we could, I can propose a change to this, but that might get some static from ecology, simply because in their world, normal protective bulkhead means exactly what is stated here. So I'll just.
Yeah. Open that. That's the reason for the two policies, or the one policy anyway.
Okay.
So we have at least something that tells them why we want to say that.
Okay.
And to save the environment. Save our lakes.
Okay. Well, I will go ahead and I will put it in here. This word will respond. And eutrophic lake. It was and, and eutrophic lakes, right? That was the addition.
Right. You put, you had to add a comma, take out an and and yeah, and eutrophic lakes.
Okay. Add comma and eutrophic lakes. Okay. I will that in here and we will, and that, that is consistent with what planning commission said for other elsewhere in the document. And so I won't do a roll call on that one. Okay. If there is nothing else on the subject of shoreline stabilization, I would propose that we cap this tonight for time. And when we come back on July 7th, I will bring you the appendices, which is fairly, should be fairly short. It's always been short and then we'll, we'll wrap up some remaining policy issues, things that I've been working on for you that need your feedback before this document is finalized for public hearing review. So I'm seeing some thumbs, so I will, okay, if that works for you guys, I will conclude this work session. Thank you very much.
Well, Jim, Andy, I have a question. The re-classification or, you know, the appendix that classifies property. The Scott had said, I don't know, two years ago, when they, they did the code review, they went through it, you know, parcel, basically piece by piece to, to rezone stuff. And based on our experience with properties that have been brought before us that have been reclassified, we have reclassified them back to what they were before. My concern is of the 2,700, 2,600 parcels that have been reclassified, how many of those would we change back if we had them in front of us? And how many of those property owners will not really realize what's happening to their property? So I look at us as, as kind of a protection. I'd kind of like Scott's input on that. And the reason I bring this up is it's the amount of time we spend on, do we, do we spend a lot of time on the classification of the properties? Or we just gloss it over, let people raise their own issues?
So to that point, the postcard notification is still being planned. And so we have actually made modifications to that language since the planning commission saw it at their November 18th meeting. At that meeting, you know, planning commission expressed that they wanted it to be more direct, the language to be more direct. And so we have amended that language so that when those postcards go out to people ahead of the virtual open house, that it's essentially saying, these changes are happening and your property will be affected either by the designation or buffers or, you know, other changes in the document. So we are making direct notification to people who will have their shoreline environment designations changed to something that is more protective. Or if their buffers, maybe their designation is not changing, but their buffers are increasing. So for lakes, there's some, some of those things there. So that, that specific notification is going out and yes, we do expect people will raise those issues as we get into public hearing. As far as reviewing all of those again, as, as planning commission, my understanding of the work plan is that we are, we are not bringing, you know, the, the shoreline environment designations as a whole back to planning commission, that, that if there are specific ones that the planning commission wishes to address, we can, we can look at those, or if we see, you know, requests for that from the public come in, that we will, we will do it that way. But that, that as part of this effort moving forward, you know, we are not otherwise planning to comprehensively review and address those, those designations. You see Jennifer is.
No, just as a reminder, as part of the public outreach, we're creating that interactive map so that folks can get a very clear picture of how their property is changed or not changed. And that's the point of the public outreach. A lot of this initial shoreline environment designation work was done years ago and went through a lot of process. This whole SMP has had, you know, the planning commission alone has had 57 planning commission meetings with the SMP on your agenda. And started back in 2017. So a lot of this work has been reviewed and done through time. And I realize some people are newer to the process or, or whatever, but I think in order for us to kind of start to open up those gates to the public, to be able to have more transparency on what the proposed changes are and to give feedback on those proposed changes, we need to get to that next step of putting that information out there, having that public outreach campaign happen. And that's, that's reflected in Andy's memo and the schedule moving forward to try to wrap up this and at this stage of the draft review work, so we can set that public hearing, have that multi-week public virtual open house and all of that information be disseminated and then have the public hearing, collect all those public comments and then spend additional work sessions with the planning commission, going through that and making whatever changes seem like they need to be made. So that's the process moving forward.
A link included in the postage and the postcard?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there will be a link and, and yes, and I, and also the, the dates will be on that as well. And I, I want to, when Jennifer was talking, I want to clarify something I said. I don't, I didn't want to make it small. You know, the shoreline environment designations are done. Finito, we're never reviewing them again. It's, the work plan does not contemplate having them reviewed comprehensively prior to the planning commission public hearing. So through that public hearing process and through the testimony we receive about the specific shorelines where people live and say, hey, you know, I see that mine is designated, proposed natural. I don't think it should be, take a look at that. You know, that's the sort of work that we'll be doing on the other side of the public hearing.
Scott, you were there when you, they did this all to you. I didn't get the sense that you had a feeling that it benefited properly. What's your input? You're muted, muted Scott.
Base part didn't work. I, I think, you know, we're sending the letter out. I'm willing to wait and see what kind of response we get. You know, if we get one or two people that come in and say, you know, this is a problem and. You know, if we get one or two people that come in and say, you know, this is a problem and this is why, then obviously there's not that, if there's 2,700 property owners, it doesn't sound like there's that many that are gonna disagree. If we start getting comment after comment on shoreline designation, then we need to look at it, I think.
Okay, uh, anything else for SMP work session? Otherwise, I will say goodnight.
Thanks Andrew for all your work.
Thank you.
See you, Jennifer.
Staff updates. Okay, so, um, a couple of upcoming board, uh, briefings and meetings scheduled. The planning commission's recommendations, as you know, on the CIP minor amendment, were forwarded to the board. They discussed those recommendations at their June 3rd briefing and had a follow-up discussion on June 8th. Um, and then on June 8th, they voted to set a public hearing on the CIP amendment on June 22nd at 3:00 PM. Uh, all information around the CIP amendments continues to be posted on the CIP project page at Thurston Planning.org. And folks interested in attending that hearing and speaking can go through the Board of County Commissioners website where you can find out how to register to speak at public hearings. Again, that'll be June 22nd at 3:00. Um, let's see, the planning commission's recommendation to form a citizens group for the wireless code update was reviewed and approved. The letter stating that recommendation has been reviewed and approved by Chair Simmons. That's gonna be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow with their briefing materials ahead of a briefing that staff scheduled for them on this topic, which will be June 23rd from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. So that briefing is intended to communicate, um, the planning commission's recommendation, but also to just have a check-in on this uh, topic, because the Board of County Commissioners has been receiving a lot of input from the public. There's a lot of energy around this, as everyone knows, and a lot of concern. And so we wanted to get the board a chance to hear from, you know, staff, legal staff, all the folks to know where we are with the project, to hear about the recommendations from the planning commission on the citizens committee and just get our general check-in on where the board wants to go with the scope and timeline of the project. So that's happening. Did I already say when that's happening? June 23rd from 2:00 to 3:00. And again, pla- planning staff does not have a particular recommendation on the on the item right now for wireless. So let's see, uh, let, um, I know, oh, I wanted to point out that information on how to attend any board briefing, meeting, public hearing, that's all on the board's webpage and they've updated that information because they have opened up to in-person attendance at their meetings. Um, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, but they're also continuing to live stream everything on the county YouTube channel, so. Pick your poison, whichever way you want to pay attention to what they're up to. And those were my updates. And I think someone had a question about, was it the website? Someone had a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is some of the neighbors have asked about the planning commission website. When you go on, it now asks you to put your email address and sign in, so you know you have to.
Yeah, that was a glitch that happened today to all of us too internally. That's a, that's an IT thing that happened today. So everyone trying to access the webpage today, as I understand it, happened to me, it happened to Andy, I know, and I think it happened to obviously external people. Um, that's something that IT has been made aware of. It shouldn't be asking you for any special anything to get onto any of our public facing webpages, so.
Okay, so that was just an error.
Yeah, that's just a glitch in the system.
Yeah, the second thing is if the governor announces shortly that the state is open, what impact does that have on our meeting and public hearings we're talking about, open houses and all that stuff?
Yeah, um, that is a great question and one I wish I had an answer to, and I do not. Uh, it's the same question I'm raising up the chain in the county so that we can have a consistent policy for all of our boards and commissions. Um, uh, as we open up, I know there's gonna be, I think a lot of people are interested in still doing what the board has chosen to do, which still have like a hybrid situation where you have in-person availability to meet and also have virtual, because we get a lot of great public participation. Um, we have through allowing things to be on Zoom, so we do have one room at the county where we can do both, so there'll be some getting up to speed on how to get that rolling. And then we're just gonna wait and see what the direction is from the governor and how that affects our boards and commission meetings and what changes we're gonna make to get all back together in person. Um, but still have that, I think, virtual component, which I think is helpful to some folks. Um, but I don't have any solid information on the, on the next steps for that, and I'm, I'm sort of awaiting county direction on those things.
But somebody is looking at what that would look like if, you know, strategic planning instead of waiting until it happens and then say, oh gosh, how are we gonna do this?
Well, I'm assuming so. I know that we booked room 280, you know, we used to meet room 152, which is that larger space in building one that doesn't have the technological ability to let us to simulcast or, or, uh, have that hybrid. So we thought way ahead and Polly was really on the ball and booked out room 280, which is the commissioners' meeting room for the rest of the year, should we need to move to that room. So um, we have it booked and then whether and how we're going to use that based on governor and, you know, county manager direction and policies that are established by the county remains to be seen, but um, we will let you know and give you plenty of time to put on your work pants, I guess, to come in live if that's what we're gonna do.
Does it make sense for you to know how many of us are vaccinated or not?
That's one of the big questions they have to answer is how we're going to do attestations around vaccination status and with, with, whether we're going to be able to want to the process for asking for that information from our volunteers on our boards and commissions, and that's a big, that's one of the big things that has to be worked out.
Is there any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, Jennifer and staff for helping us through this. Um, so let's do calendars and, and I just want to reach out again to Kevin and welcome to our panel. And I hope we haven't scared you away. So
Thank you. Very interesting so far.
That's a good way to put it. At this point, Kevin, we just check calendars to make sure everybody, we're gonna have corn for our next two meetings. So is there anybody that will be unable to attend our July 7th meeting? How about July 21st? Okay, you guys all have a great day tomorrow and a great couple of weeks and we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy Father's Day, everyone.
Thanks, Dad.